All right, I'd like to call the Marvin Planning Board Meeting of January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. Let's see, we do not have anyone remote participating. And has everyone had a second to look at the agenda? And if so, could someone make a motion to approve?
Make a motion that will approve the agenda?
That's Rich. Rich said that.
Second. We'll keep it here for you.
Michael LaBelle said second. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved? All right, adoption of the previous minutes. Anyone have any questions, comments, or changes?
Nope.
If there are none, if someone could make a motion to approve.
I motion.
To approve?
Second.
It's a race. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved?
Aye.
We do not have anyone here for public comment. So we will move on to our first item of discussion, which is the Heritage at Marvin Elevations. Hunter?
Yeah, so this is basically just kind of a preliminary discussion, overview, feedback type session for this. We have received the elevations for the home design for the Heritage at Marvin subdivision. We also received the preliminary plaque and construction documents, staffs reviewing those. Per ordinance and per their development agreement, basically, those do go through quote-unquote DRB approval. I am going to package all those into one, but I wanted to kind of break it up since I do have the elevations ready and go ahead and get initial comments, feedback from you guys slash a chance also tell me, since this is kind of like the first time that we've had a detailed like this DRB kind of review, also know what else you guys would like to see so I can get it from Jones Homes. And then potentially at the February or March meeting, all of this will be coupled into one review and approval with their preliminary plaque and construction documents that you guys will, I guess, to anybody has DRB, you'll approve them and then council will then go affirm that decision. So does everybody have their packets because the elevations are in there? In short, staffs reviewed them. I think they look, I mean, they look good. I mean, that's not, not anything crazy. In there, they do meet the kind of the color scheme, the material that was approved as part of their rezoning plan. But like I said, I don't know how we really want to go through this or if there's any initial comments, feedback that you guys want to kind of discuss further. I'm just, like I said, I'm trying to learn what you guys want to see so I can go ahead and kind of get more information for you guys when you guys are actually kind of reviewing and consider it. Because the only other DRB type approval that we've had, design-wise, like elevation, I mean, you guys did Village Hall, but I wasn't here at that time.
There's monuments on.
We've done monument signs and stuff, but those are kind of straightforward. This one's a little bit more detailed. And so that's why we wanted to kind of start the process now where it's not all thrown to you at once. But does anybody kind of have any questions on it?
I do, but I'm going to pause and let other people start. Anybody have any comments or questions?
It could even be recommendations.
Yeah. Like if there's one or two don't love or...
My question is, so the Heritage District, you know, we talked about the types of homes that we'd like to see in the Heritage District, and this is in the Heritage District. There are many, I guess, home styles that don't align with the Heritage District. So I'm just curious as to what they're, and they're not here to speak for themselves, but kind of where some of these even came from.
So what do you, I guess my question is, what do you mean don't align? Like, as in, I know what you mean, like, because...
The two things here with the housing type and stuff in the Form Based Code, legally, like I said, that's kind of, those are recommendations or kind of like visual recommendations. Now, since in their rezoning approval, they committed to doing design criteria for the residential structures, and that's kind of what this process is, but like outside of like material and kind of color scheme, like those design, architectural designs of those homes are more of a guideline type. It's nothing that they are formally like committed to. But that, this is, like I said, this is that chance to kind of initiate that process. Like if you feel that these do not match those styles, and that's, that's, those are comments and stuff that we can share with the developer to then have them revise. Because yes, in theory, that would give you guys as a design review board a way, or authorization in a way to deny it because it's not consistent with quote-unquote approved regulations or plans. But like one thing I have at, like more, like, these are obviously like renderings of the elevations. We don't know the full architectural material. I mean, you can kind of take assumptions. It's hardy plank and, and brick, but, but that's where I'm trying to see what, because I know for like example, like the Marvin Gardens brought in like the stone variations and you guys reviewed and looked at that, like, it's getting, what's complicated with this process is you're taking a commercial design process and then trying to apply it to residential, which yes, has been our intent. But from how you guys are reviewing and what you want, it's kind of unclear on what, especially from a staff level, like I'm supposed to be looking at further because you're dealing with multiple potential residential structures compared to one that you're looking at on a plan set and all this stuff. Because like these are just the conceptual drawings. You don't have, obviously, where, what, where which one's going and how it's going to look on the actual site plan and stuff like you would with a commercial development.
There's just a lot of different styles and...
I'm concerned with the one car garage where they're going to park.
So that one, I believe, Will, if you're referring to...
Two of them. Two of them what?
Four.
Plan four.
Plan four.
Yeah.
If I recall, and this is, like I said, this is information I have asked from the developer. This is actually a two-car garage. It comes out, and then that's just a single, like, so there's technically, there'd be three garage parking spaces, so this would be a two-car garage. So side load garage, and then you have that one front load.
So where's the side load?
Yes.
So that's what it looks like.
That is my, from my understanding, from what I have reviewed with them and discussed and looking at some of their other products, yes, that is a side-load two-car garage, and you have a solo kind of front load.
Can we request a side elevation on plan four?
Yeah, I was confused while I was looking over these.
There's a lot of wide enough for a side load.
The, there are certain, certain ones, and that's where, like I said, I was kind of explaining, like, what's complicated about this is we're proving a set of elevations. So they're still going to have to comply with the zoning regulations that fit in that footprint. But there are certain lots out there that have, that are wider, so they, some of these elevations may be locked into that. And maybe that's something, like, if I get these dimensions and stuff by the time you guys are fully reviewing this and either next month or March, I can try to then look at the site plan and kind of, we would probably then be able to really get an idea of what plans will fit on which lots based off of the dimensions of the homes as well as the lot dimensions.
Is there going to be any restrictions about street parking?
So we did put two things, so one, the village will be taken over their streets. We would not, unless it was some type of local, like ordinance to specifically regulate on-street parking for those streets, no. But in their development agreement, and one of the recommendations is that they would put that, they would regulate it through the HOA. It's kind of just a safeguard. I mean, we don't control the HOA, but it's kind of one of those good faith things that, that quote-unquote on-street parking will be limited, or not limited, but...
I mean, I'm going to say that doing that is going to control the occupancy in a way and also make it aesthetically appealing because if you go up to a hundred folks down their streets, it doesn't look good.
Yeah, and on their site plan too, there's certain areas in the development that I've requested that they add like on-street parking where it's, you still have your roadway, but then you have like a curb cutout that's like, you know, eight to ten feet in width.
And a bridge?
Yeah. So because the actual on-street parking, like I said, these are in theory smaller lots, driveway cutouts are going to be closer, you know, you don't want to take that, the intent is to not have them on the roads and especially taking the chance of blocking people's driveways or line of sight. But these homes will be sitting, you know, fifty, forty feet back. So the homes sit a minimum of twenty-five feet back, so the driveways will be at least twenty-five feet, if not longer, which would be stacking for three full car, I mean, three, two to three cars, depending on how you do it, which that's typical in like kind of more of these smaller lot developments. And that's where, like I said, the offset is they provide some on-street parking areas that can alleviate some of the actual on-street congestion that you could, you could have.
Would they be allowing like circulators in front?
Circle driveways? I, I mean, from the way these lot widths and stuff are, I don't see how one that's even, like, would be physically possible. Like I said, without looking at each individual kind of plot plan, I don't know until I, until I get it. Like, we kind of had that, we had that kind of come up in an existing neighborhood. Like, were we on the roads, we have a driveway permit which basically allows you to do your driveway. Basically, the servants, the curb cutout and everything complies with our engineer regulations. But if it's already there and they're doing a circle driveway, then what are the regulations? Like, I mean, they still have to get that driveway permit, but then, then, then the question is, well, if the developer still maintains the roads, you know, if the developer makes it work, then that's...
Yeah, I was just thinking about it. He could provide extra parking plus be there.
I said, it's going to, it's going to come down to how the lot, how each of these elevations, like these home designs and how they actually fit on each lot. Because yeah, for sure, there's, there's certain cookie cutter lots that are the minimum, and it's not going to provide you enough space to allow, because the minimum width for each lot's, I think, sixty feet? No, sorry, seventy feet. So all the lots are minimum seventy feet wide, so you may be able to have a little bit more of a turnaround, but, you know, it just kind of depends on the floor, overall.
And the elevations that the footprint...
Okay.
Any?
General...
I guess.
In today's world, that's about as, as close as we can get to designing something that looks old or heritage-ish.
Yeah, I think, you know, discussing this with Jones Homes and kind of then looking at, I mean, it's, I had somebody mention to me that it looks like some homes at Marvin Creek, like...
Some of them do, yeah.
Yeah, like, like I said, legally, residential aesthetic designs, like, not our expertise and because legally we can't, and in normal circumstances, we, we can't regulate it. So we don't kind of get into the nitty-gritty like we do commercial. But like I said, how this, about how this district's set up and what the intent was is to have some of this control, it's just this is our first one. So it's like, what, what can, like, how, how, how into the weeds slash do we want to get and how much control are we trying to really establish? And we tried to set up those parameters in the Form Based Code and Small Area Plan, but it's, it's not perfect. And even when they got the, like I said, the rezoning approved, what was, what was approved were those conceptual elevations, which somewhat follow this.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
But not fully, and I mean, I mean, staff, I mean, that's one stain that I noted. But then also the color and material schemes, which do follow this, this, what's being proposed, do follow what was approved in that with the rezoning? So that should stop, because I, let's see if I've got...
What was like the, you know, like porchways and tin roof sheds over the porches and balconies, which, you know...
Exactly, in the scheme of as, as close as you can in today's world.
Yeah, because here's, here's the development agreement that has this, and if we had a V E C for this other thing, but like these were the conceptual elevations, color schemes that were approved in the, with the rezoning package. And like the elevation, like the art, architectural...
Architectural.
...design of the homes, like the layout are the same of what's being proposed. The biggest difference is here is like, let's see, where is this one? Like, this one, for example? Is that that one? Is that one? So it's the, it's the color that's kind of then also, is it...
Like a light tan? This one?
English Country.
This one, sorry.
Which one? This one?
Yeah. It's like a variation, like that's kind of the thing, is they took some of this and meshed some together. And part of it is too, is that Jones Homes has conveyed, it's like this is, they're creating a whole nother product line from like what they have at the estates and even I think at some of their other products. So this is even like a test for them, and so...
It's just all over the place.
Can you remind me, how many homes are going in here?
Sixty-eight.
So there's twenty-four homes that they're presenting, and there's going to be sixty-eight. Are they saying we're going to have X of each? Are they saying that we can't put one next to another?
Correct. In their development agreement, one of the stipulations was that you can't have the same elevation beside each other, and you can't have the same color scheme beside each other. Now, you can have like the same, like, for example...
Not the color scheme is bothering me as much. The elevations, I definitely think should be different.
Well, and they're, they're basically, it's the same plan with different styles of elevations.
Correct.
And that's, that's the thing. It's not like, it's not like the same plan with variations on a theme. It's like one's a Craftsman, one's a Georgian, one's a shingle, I guess that's a, I don't think that's a type, but you know...
Yeah, if you, that's what I'm saying. If you look at like number two, I'm sorry, number three and number four, that's the same house.
I mean, I don't understand why that's Georgian.
See?
Farmhouse. I mean, it's like...
Farmhouse and French Country are the same house. I mean, one has three windows, one has one, but it's typically the same house.
Well, I guess it's, has to do with how many garages are loading in the front and the other ones loading on the side.
Yeah.
So it's different, slight variations.
See, look.
And that's also...
They're side by side. You're not going to get that side by side.
It's like the less, Plan Three is the less pointy version.
And the other thing too, to take into consideration too, is like with this, is that...
What changed the...
No, I'm agreeing.
They're going to have different packages of these variations, to your point, like with the side-load garage and certain things that can be added on. So the whole intent is still where, from a streetscape standpoint, you don't see the same house that, that's why certain, certain, one of these, like if they, they're the same model or to your point, like the same house, but there's certain features that do make them stand out over one another where they could be beside each other, and you really wouldn't be able to tell once it's actually built.
Well, and that, and that's clear when you look at them all together. Like, when you look at them as a whole, you, it feels like it's very, you know, like the, the roof lines are very, they vary, right? But then when you take them individually, some of them just seem off. It's just, it's almost like someone had an original house and then they added to it like they do in around Freedom Park.
Yeah, I mean, if they're not allowed, I apologize. If they're not allowed to be next door to each other, you know, the same thing. I would say, you know, the Plan Two, Craftsman and French Country is, are the same design, same roofline, you know, would that be allowed to be next door to each other?
From my understanding, yes. But that's, but see, those are comments though that I can take back and say, hey, like...
They have the same roofline. I would, if, if we want to differentiate and not have the same house next to each other, I think you can't have, the rooflines are...
Can we really, can we really do that?
Well, that's my question.
It's kind of like straight...
That's where like...
...versus geog...
I mean, that's, look, if you look at these real quick, that's the same house, roofline, the same roofline.
But then you go up and you got the more dimensional...
And the question is, are we allowed to say, hey, we don't want the same rooflines next to each other?
See, and that's where, to answer your question, I don't form, like have an answer because this is kind of the first time we're doing this. Okay. If you read our ordinance, the designer you ordered ordinance, yes, you do have that authority. Now, as I stated with residential, though, you don't. And so I think we still have to be careful of what all we do kind of nitpick here because even though they've agreed to it with the look, kind of conceptual elevations and the material and stuff, certain nitpick, like we can still recommend it, but...
Are they ever coming back?
Yeah, they'll, yeah, this is like I said...
I mean, we can ask them that question here, I mean, because, and that's what I'm asking. If we're not allowed to do it, then what are we saying? You know, what are we...
I mean, just there's like a ranch dormer in the middle of the roof. It's, it's, there are just some odd choices in here that like catch the eye and you're like, what is that? Like, it's just, it's awkward. I like the materials that they're using. I like, some of the designs are, are very in line with Marvin just in, as a whole, but then there's just some weird choices that are just wacky.
Because it's the same.
I think that would help a lot.
They just put one window versus three windows.
Because elevations are very limited.
I'm trying to find in the development agreement if I, if those terms are...
I think we all agree.
Yeah.
There could be certain points that need to be addressed. And who are we to say, oh no, you can't do this one, which they could be making more money.
And that's, that's what needs to stay, statute stays, like we can't...
I might love that single window and get more money, but it's not... But you got, like John said, you got eight.
But that's why we're having this meeting.
Yeah.
Right? Well, it is, it's a continuum at the end. But then what happens is there's only a few lots left, and developers are like, oh, I can't put this next to each other, you have to pick this one, no, and you may not end up...
So our questions, recommendations are, we need some side views.
Yep.
And we want to know if, like, the plans, like, they have four plans, Plan One, Two, Three, Four. Plan One has the same rooflines, Plan Two has the same rooflines, or are they saying they'll put Plan One next to Plan Two and not Plan One, Plan One, French versus...
Yes.
Farmhouse?
Okay.
I go, you understand the question?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Because they have the same rooflines.
Yeah, and that's where, looking at how they then broke this up, like, I agree with you, that can kind of be confusing because like, what I would be then taking into consideration or from what was conveyed would be like, you wouldn't have two like farmhouses beside one another.
Correct.
But you have different, you, then you, then it goes further with the plans.
Yeah, they could say, hey, listen, French Country is different than Craftsman, but the rooflines are identical.
So I, I just want to read you guys, like, in their development agreement, part of the terms for architectural uniformity and consistent with the, with the master plan, which the master plan was their rezoning plan, says, "In addition to the requirements set forth in the Form Based Code, the development shall be substantially consistent with design themes, architectural themes, architectural elements, building materials, and color palettes on sheet R seven," that, what I just showed you guys. And, and then it says, "Development will use historic styling with front porches, columns, dormer windows, along with a mix of high-quality building material, including a mix of metal roof accents, gable accent, bricks, stone, and cementous siding to maintain the argaryen feel with an updated modern living style." So it's, it's, it's vague.
Agrarian.
Agrarian.
Farming. I was like, that's not...
Yeah, like I said, that's where...
I get that.
We get into the materials here, but the actual kind of...
Design.
Yeah, is, is, like, that's where they're committing and that's our kind of control levy.
I think there's a group of questions by the group.
But, yeah.
I mean, they, I guess they're saying historical, I guess, architectural features or whatever, but not, but then they say agrarian later. So it's like, but some of these aren't agrarian. I don't know, it's just...
The other thing I would recommend, and if, I don't have the small area plan in front of me, but I think, let's see if we have the...
Agricultural related to cultivated land or cultivation of it.
Besides the farms.
The Craftsman's House also has agrarian origins. It actually originated in India.
Yeah, it's just not, like, it's a Dilworth thing.
I live in a Craftsman's House in the Preserve.
Really?
Mm-hmm. I did a whole paper on it.
I don't think I've ever seen it.
I, I was thinking you were speaking with some authority there, so...
I have a background in architecture.
There you go, so very good.
There's been styles of Craftsman.
Yeah, definitely.
That's why, you know, I, I, like I said, I'm not an architect, expert on this. Like, I can say, oh, that house looks pretty, but it's, I'm not, you know, I'm, my main thing, I'm looking at paper and looking at the zoning and if it fits on the property and stuff.
Of course, of course.
And like I said, that's because we ninety-nine percent of the time don't get involved in residential aesthetics.
Yeah.
And, and I think you guys have also made some great points. It's like, how much do we want to get involved because is it our right to say you can't do this, and then it ends up being a price point issue or something of what you're trying to achieve? And I, and I, my, my opinion is that that was some of the intent of how this design review board ordinance got to where was that? But overall, I think, providing some recommendation and feedback like we're doing and trying to get a little bit more of a traditional like product of what we think will be best for this area, that's where I'm really relying on you guys on. And my only other recommendation for you, if there's any home styles or anything that you got either in existing neighborhoods here or that you're familiar with, like, like...
I would recommend going on a little tour of all the neighborhoods, you know?
I'll tell you, I've seen them all.
Yeah.
This just feels like, this just feels like a, a bit like, um, Stone Creek Ranch in McLeaver County.
Yeah. Is that what it's feeling like? I think the color scheme could definitely be a little brighter.
I just, I think it's hard because it's like, would you, as a, as someone who lives in Marvin, want to buy a home in this neighborhood?
I would say yes.
Really?
Sure. Well, by what do you think Marvin is?
Sure, why not? No, I'm just saying like from the choice.
Yeah, you got eight choices.
Depends on the law.
Yeah.
I would, I don't think I...
The Marvin will decide.
Yeah, it will.
We make our recommendations, that's all you do. You don't tell them, do you, that you make recommendations and see what they say?
Like, the biggest thing here is like if these would have been presented, I'm just going to say like purple, pink, and yellow homes type things, that's where, in my opinion, you guys would have more control because that's not consistent with this. Getting into certain other aspects of it, it's like, I think we can provide those recommendations because I, I do believe that the developer will take those into consideration, but I don't think we hold our hat on trying to make that a stipulation and force them to do that, like...
Plan number one, plan number one is more, more expensive to build than plan number three.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not...
I'm just saying, if you want them to look more custom, you want, you can, you know, focus more on those particular styles, which have the, you know, dimensional roofs, which are definitely, stick with more expensive...
House by house and customer by customer as they make their picks.
Yeah, and that's where, what Jones Homes with, what, what started this, is I think they have put together, like I said, this initial type plan of, of that, but they do plan on offering then minor variations of each one. It's just, they wanted to kind of make sure where they're in the right direction of this before they kind of then get into their, their, their packages with each, each, each house and plan.
Have they said when they want to break ground?
So breaking ground, the actual land development of it is all really a matter of when they get their construction documents. We're in the process of reviewing, and we'll probably have those finished this month. The engineer's reviewing them. They'll probably break ground on the land development.
The day after.
Well, yeah, which will most likely still be probably summer or fall.
At least have about six months left.
Yeah, I mean, this was, I do plan, I, so once I get to, my, the way I do it is once we get those initial comments back from the, our engineer that's done the review, as well as like my comments, and if there's nothing like way out there that's inconsistent with our regulations or inconsistent with what their sketch plan or their rezoning plan chose, then I typically give those comments back to them for them to make those revisions, but then I start the approval process with, with planning board because once again, in normal senses, those construction documents aren't really, you know, as Rick's kind of said in the U D O, like, what are you, as planning board, what, what really authority do you have or what are we, what are you kind of looking at? But because this is conditional zoning and per the ordinance with the DRB, it all will be packaged in together, and it will probably be March, if not April, when it finally comes to you guys for a formal vote. But I just, like I said, I have the elevations, I got the plans, and I wanted to break them up because the elevations were ones that were like, whoa, and especially with, the other thing is I wanted to do this tonight because Rick wasn't able, he was, the whole U D O was already planned for next Tuesday anyway. And so, so we need to have this meet, yeah, we needed to have a meeting, and this was something that definitely needed, this will be addressed, I mean, discussed. But what I will do, just to make sure, I will go back to developer and just add requests for them to provide some side elevations of homes, side, really, I mean, potentially even give...
Where you have a side garage is really what my thinking was.
Yeah, um.
Where it looks like it's a single car garage, they, I don't know, say, there's side elevations if we can get those. I can tell you which ones, if you want.
Yeah, the, the side elevation would be good, the, and I don't think we're seeing that here, you know, so many of these uh, less expensive developments, brick front vinyl siding all the way around.
Yeah.
Austin is. Plan Four Craftsman, Plan Four Georgian.
Plan Four Craftsman.
Plan Four Georgian and Plan Four Shingle. Anybody else, is that, did I leave any, anything out, guys? A lady?
You said the Georgian, okay.
Plan Four.
What, you're just looking for side, side entrance?
Yeah, because they, it looks like it's a single garage here, number eleven, twelve, and thirteen on your.
Yeah.
Well, well, you can see the single on the one side, but on the opposite side with those two windows, that's going to be a two-car garage from the side.
It'll also be good to have a side elevation so you can understand like the dimension of it. It's better than just seeing a flat image.
That's the other thing that I'm going to try to get, if they have it, is either kind of generic like footprint, like 2D kind of looking at the footprint.
It's not, it's not very expensive.
Yeah.
As well as, yeah, the, just be able to put some square footage numbers with some of these so you guys can see it a little, I mean, like I said, kind of putting it all together for you.
Um. And I'm curious, if, I don't know if this is something you could ask, but how many of each, so there's twenty-four homes in all, how many of each do they plan to sell? Are they going to present all these twenty-four? And again, that's just more knowledge, uh, it just, or do they already know, because a certain size of lots may be slightly larger, that they're going to put the Georgian that has the three-car on the one side? So just, just know, if they're going to say, I'm going to do twelve Georgians, and then if I commit, I'm one of the first people, I say, oh God, the Georgian would look great on this lot, it's probably premium, it could be a premium lot.
I guarantee you, I might be wrong, but like, most of them are going to be Plan One or Two in the three different elevations of each. I feel very confident.
So, okay, so.
I've been researching.
He can guarantee something, but say I might be wrong.
Well, I guarantee you up to a ninety-nine percent.
Those look like the over fifty-five communities.
That's what I'm saying.
Because you think there's a better price point in there for them?
This is huge need.
Huge need.
It just, and those are the ones that, yeah, it just, as a whole, I just don't think it looks agrarian, I just don't, yeah.
Well, again, it's, some of them do.
There's a couple in there that do.
Some of them look wrong.
But as a whole, it looks like this could be anywhere.
So then we need to go back and dissect what the Marvin Heritage District states?
Oh, I mean.
Because again, if you were to put these homes in anywhere else, in, in any one of the developments we have today, nobody would think twice or bet an eyelash.
You could call these anyone similar.
Couple of them look like the ones I have in Weddington, or excuse me, some of my neighbors have in Weddington Chase.
Marvin Creek.
Marvin Creek.
But yeah, and that, but in, in normally, like, I would say that that's not a big deal if it was just a plain, you know, whatever neighborhood, wherever. But, I mean, this is supposed to be the Heritage District and the Heritage District has very a specific aesthetic, so.
Yeah, I think with, the point you're trying to make is that this is supposed to be kind of like aesthetically the bridge between the Heritage District and the residence area, but it's leaning a little bit too much towards the resident area than the Heritage District.
So what do we really have in the Heritage District? We need to go back and read that for a discussion, because you don't have to, we could still go back to them, to Jen, uh, Jenny Holmes, or Jones Holmes, excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Jones. But, so we can take a look at that, because I'd like to go back and read.
You reviewed it, and this does fit in the, this does fit in the requirements of Heritage District, you've done that, correct?
Yeah, like I said, from, what's tough is, like I said, in, it's different, like I said, it's, it's, the residential design part can get very complex because there's so many variables and different aesthetic, design portions of it that you can throw in, that makes it a different, a model, whatever. Compared to commercial where like, if this was, if this was the, the Marvin Grove, you know, elevations of theirs, like theirs is pretty set in stone because it's one building, we, we have those kind of fully outlined on, on the material and kind of what it's supposed to look and design, like, what's in the Form Based Code? And I even checked with the small area plan, is mainly, I mean, like, this is what's in the Form Based Code. I mean, these are just examples, they're not consistent with anything, these are just ones that were put in, in one prior to me, but two, like, I mean, yes, it's, it's kind of like the, the type of homes as well as a little bit of the, uh, I guess, material, I mean, that's mainly the biggest thing, is kind of looking at the material and.
I think they said over eight.
Yeah, during the rezoning, and that's another thing, like, I will have them.
Media house in Marvin.
Yeah, it's, um, what they conveyed at the rezoning was that they were going to be starting at seven hundred fifty-eight.
It's a public median house.
Really? I figured, I thought it would be a lot.
I thought it was higher, yeah.
Four thousand?
They're, they're between thirty-five hundred and five thousand?
The footprint or the total square footage?
Finished.
Like the first floor or the whole building?
Yeah, the whole.
Whole building.
The whole building will probably be, I mean, because the footprint will probably be anywhere from like twenty-five hundred to five thousand. So like, then you'll have anywhere from probably, I'd say forty-five hundred total at the low end of total square footage, um, to six to seven, because you're not going to have
You don't.
a two-story, five-thousand footprint that goes, I mean, that's five and five, and it's just, I don't think, it's.
We'll probably have double height.
Yeah, so. So you, that is, I'm going to.
That's just for my own.
Yeah, well, I.
When you see the front view, it's one, but when you see a floor plan, it's like, it could be extremely deep.
Hmm.
Bob, if you don't mind me asking, from a council perspective, I know when the rezoning plan was going through, you guys kind of had that initial, what, what? And, and in your opinion, do you think some of this is kind of consistent with that?
Yeah, um, because I was just looking at it and I was trying to recall when we saw some of the elevations and, and I think, I know me personally, I, I was concerned about material. And I was saying, uh, very clearly that I said, I'm only seeing color, but what material will make it look older? And I said, first off, I think the first thing is you can put a lot of copper, uh, like copper roofs, copper eaves, um, that sort of thing, which they said, yes, they were open to. I said, how about a lot of wood? I mean, wood of, you know, what would be almost barn wood sort of accenting and that sort of thing. Um, so really, we were concerned about the, what's that?
The red bricks.
Yeah, and then that, and, and the fun, the funny thing was this was right around, and what we were looking at with this. When we look at the elevations here, uh, collectively, all of us had somewhat of an issue with the, the last building that's facing this way. That was kind of this look of like it was a New Orleans kind of vibe, that sort of thing.
Broad iron, like, they're broad iron, like, you know, metalwork is their specialty.
Yeah. And then we went back to, when we started looking at these elevations, that specific one you're talking about, I was saying, well, I mean, okay, kinda, what? So, again, you're right, the brick sort of was like standing out as much as it was with this. Um, but we didn't know what the final, we didn't know what the final elevations were going to be. So I guess at that point, you know, they were just getting our ideas. I was concerned about the material. I needed the material to make the building look older, whatever, you know, vintage, whatever that means.
And, and I, and I, I know, either way, within those discussions or it came up, you know, planning board level for, for this was that the, the brick is intended to kind of be, I mean, because the, back in the, the history is that the brick was made from the red clay here and that's why I had it's, you know, a certain color aesthetics to it, and that's like what some of the intent driven in, in their proposal here. Um, now, I'm not an expert on that, but that's, I do recall that being part of the discussion.
You're talking about what does old look like? You know, old homes or old buildings in North Carolina is red brick, you know, it's not.
But aged, though.
Wow.
So.
Will sound.
But, you know, they're, they're red brick and white clamber siding, and that's basically what you had, period.
And then also visually, they could be making it very red in the picture to show that it's red brick. I think the blue-gray one.
The other thing, uh, between now and the next meet, um, at least the February meeting, I would recommend going on their website and looking at some of their other designs. Um, I've, I've started this, I haven't had a chance with some of the other things going on, but, you know, if there's any type of floor plan there, that could potentially be recommended, like, hey, we want something like this. And then that, once again, we can let them know that, because I know that they have some different uh, house plans and then stuff like for, you know, products in the estates or their, the, uh, Weddington Falls and all that stuff. But, um, that information, that, that feedback can definitely potentially lead to them adding some other type of product line. It's just some of those are, some of those designs are for, you know, larger lots or wider lots, and that's something that, like, they did with this, is that they took some of those and tried to downscale them per se. Um, because this is a whole, it's a whole different type of product line than what they, I mean, over at the estates and other, uh, other neighborhoods in the area.
Isn't there other, I mean, we're looking at their other website and.
I wasn't looking at any ones in Florida.
No, that's in North Carolina.
Florida property is completely not.
But they're, the ones that they have on their website are actually, I think, would actually fit quite well, like that, that is gorgeous, that's beautiful.
Yeah, this was.
It looks old, but it's like.
Yeah, that's their, that's their signature, that's the one that's most, the most popular.
Well, I mean, I think that would be beautiful in this neighborhood, like, there's no white in this neighborhood, although.
That's a large house.
Because that was an example.
I think this is about. That picture of that one.
Is it?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure that was at the Falls of Weddington, fall.
Well, they've got it listed, he could be wrong, but the, they could have copied.
Broke, it's gorgeous.
But if you want to look at good Florida homes, look at Margaritaville.
Oh, Lord.
There, there's, there's like four or five different, they're doing it in Daytona and Panama City. Um, there's a couple in there, there are some really, really nice, um, looking homes, if you want a small, two thousand square foot.
So, I'm just asking, remember, that was probably my favorite home? And I said, boy, throw some copper on that thing, I said, that's the only thing I think we, we can do. And what did you just say, that one's not included?
No, no, that one was an example, when we did our small groups with you guys, when we were, uh, basically getting them the feedback for, during their rezoning process and for the development agreement, that one was an example that I shared with you guys of it, that, just trying to start a conversation of what, what you guys like.
That's not their.
It is, don't talk.
It's the one in Weddington.
You go to the Falls of Weddington.
Yeah, and that's when some of, some of council, some of council did go over to the Falls of Weddington, and that's probably also where they saw it. But which, which model is that? Does it say?
Uh, it did, yes. It was at, I'm sorry, the name of this one is.
It was the Gates of Marvin.
Right, it's interesting, they call it Gates of Marvin, not so many of the Falls of Weddington. Out of the fir wood.
No.
Oh, no, Laurel, I'm sorry, Laurel, correct.
Yeah, yeah, and they actually, um, before, I think, some of the council members went over to the neighborhood, they actually showed us three sixty, three sixty views of cul-de-sacs and stuff. So we actually saw physically that home, which is, was very pretty.
I agree. But that's one too, the, the Falls that went and Ben, when Ben was still with Jones Holmes, I remember, you know, we looked at this and he conveyed, because I went out there to, you know, get some, some information. He left, he left Jones Holmes back in, end of last year. Which, that's also why some of this is, not, not, I mean, it's just that now Ben was doing everything or kind of that, you know, direct contact, like, now I'm dealing with like five thousand people, so it, there, some of the, it's just, he knew everything that was going on and, and you see some of that's incorporated here, but the other, the people that are, you know, working with now, they weren't there from the whole rezoning product. And so that's also kind of what, what makes this a little bit different. But if you go to the Falls of Weddington, and I remember looking at three houses that were the same, maybe, I can't remember what he said, maybe the same plant, like, it's the same like design, but because of the different architectural styles and the color scheme, you couldn't tell. But like the layout on the inside, I would say. So, um.
I mean, some of those do have stones, I mean, the farmhouse, um, Bob, dear, does have a lot of nice wood in the front. The French, whatever it was, the French country is a nice one. But again, you could have some more wood in there, did have some, some stone, some flags there on the front.
Which one?
Uh, the English country on Plan Three, that's got some nice stone in front. And it has a combination of wood. And really, that piece in the front could be copper, it looks like some of some blocks. You could throw some copper in those there.
But see, and I think the other thing too, which I know you're looking at this, and maybe I can see if I can give them the run list, is that taking like the different models for the, for the home type, and then it's like looking at each different color palette to an extent that goes on point. Because I think that's another thing that, that I think, from a visual standpoint, I understand where you guys are coming from, because it's like you're seeing, you're seeing it all in one, but at the same time, you, and then it's hard to kind of picture how maybe this color palette will look on this, this design. A, and if that's something I can maybe try to get, where then you kind of have like all options to an extent. I don't know how complicated that would be for them to get, but I feel like it's something that we can just, hey, say, hey, like, is there a chance that we can just get a little bit more visual.
We can also get the houses, just the line drawing, like, without the colors too. That might help, like, understand the, um, the actual design of it as well. Because, yeah, color stands out the most to people.
Yeah, and I agree, like, I mean, like I said, looking at this, and especially when you're looking at it individually, that's where I think it catches the eye of. But at the same time, you still want to look at it that, because like, some of these homes are going to be set, I mean, they're not going to be right on top of each other and. So with that being said, I will get with Jones Holmes and get some more information for you guys. Uh, most likely in February, I'll either bring it back information-wise, um, but I don't really plan to probably have this on your guys' agenda for any type of approval until probably March. Um, but, uh, but this will probably, it's going to be back on your agenda in February, but I don't, I, I don't intend for any type of decision to be made. I want to get this information back to you guys, um, potentially invite, um, members from Jones Holmes to potentially come and, you know, solicit your guys' feedback and recommendation directly. Uh, and then they can finalize that for their March, April approval. All right, well, that's all I got on that one. Other than that, is there any other question on this? Said if there's any over the next month to, that you guys in, whatever, I mean, comments, recommendations, feel free to shoot it to me and where I can send it on over for you guys prior to the meeting. But, um, other than that, that's all I have for, for this item and, uh, I just, I guess we just need a motion to recess till Tuesday.
Yeah, a motion to recess, the planning board leaving to Tuesday, January twenty-third at six P M at Marvin Village Hall.
So moved. Should I get?
Second, and all in favor?
Hi.
All right, see you on the twenty-third.